I welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting, Monday, March 25th, 2024, 7:00 PM. McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................
Agenda item number two, roll call. Chairman Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
President.
Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
He's running late, he will be here.
Thank you. Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Moving on to agenda item number three, Subcommittee Reports. Department of Public Works.
Mr. Chair, through you, we did not have a Subcommittee meeting since our last Town Council meeting, but I am looking to schedule one in the next few weeks as well. And then we're looking at some time here in April for another ARPA meeting. I'll get with the Town Manager on that one. Thank you.
Education, Human Services. Counselor Rivas.
Yes, we had a meeting on Monday, March 18th, and we have several items on the agenda for recommendations.
Moving on to General Government. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on March 18th at 7:00 PM in the Veterans Room, and we have a few items tonight, and we also plan to have a meeting sometime next week. Thank you.
Planning and Development. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on Tuesday, March 19th. Items 20, 21, 22, 28, and 29 on tonight's agenda were discussed. Thank you.
Protectors of Burgess and Property. Counselor Shenier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting on March 18th, and we have multiple agenda items that were unanimously approved by those present, and there's no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. That'll conclude Subcommittee's. Moving on to four, Consider and Accept Special Town Council Meeting Minutes from February 7th, 2024.
So.
To your second.
Second.
It's motion to second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of those meetings?
Just a question.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Was this sent in a separate email? I never received the minutes. Was it sent at a separate email?
No, I send everything to Matt.
So, my apologies. I thought it was part of the packet. If you want to postpone it till the next meeting, we'll add it. Matt had to leave early on Thursday on scheduled time off. I didn't note that it was not in the packet. My apologies. Had I known, I would have made sure I'd have gone out, but my apologies.
All right.
What's the feeling of the council?
Most of us postpone.
Second.
More to postpone, seconded by Shenier. Discussion? No discussion, all is a favor. Approve, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Chairman's announcements. I have no announcements at this time. Moving on to Town Manager's announcements. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Do have quite a bit of items here tonight, so just bear with me. First off, the Henry Street Project, National Grid replaced the pole. We are waiting the meter to be placed onto the building. There's some question of a bill they say is pending. We're researching that with National Grid, so we're not sure what the status of that bill or if we have a bill there, but the anticipated completion date is now scheduled for April 19th. In regards to the solid waste and recycling program, much information has been given out. We apologize for the flyer from Casella not being mailed in a timely manner. My understanding it is in the mail. Hopefully, we will get it this week. Having said that, the billing program training is ongoing. We are scheduled to be live for April 1st. We're meeting tomorrow with my team to discuss the billing and some other issues, not issues, but program information on the billing and when billing payments will be made. We are having some internal discussions about possibly moving the billing date out two weeks to allow the mailer to be received and individuals to call and opt out. We are ready for the opt-out program through Open Gov, the program that we purchased for permanent. That is ready to go live, and as soon as we get the word after the Board of Health hearing, public hearing on Thursday, we should be able to get that live. We have received several requests for people to opt out. They are contacting the inspections Department, and we are compiling that list and sending them letters if they wish to opt out. I have no problem with people opting out. Many conversations that I've had with residents, if they choose to opt out and go to a different provider, that's entirely up to them. This program was to give a option to residents that would be town-based. We think that we have set up a fair program for all. We do know the concerns about multifamilies, and hopefully, the Board of Health will address that in their solid waste regulations. However, we're confident in our programming that we are able to meet the needs of the residents of Southbridge. The Board of Health will be reviewing their solid waste regulations again this week. A Board of Health public hearing regarding Chapter 2, Storage and Disposal of Solid Waste, in the Board of Health fee schedule will be held this Thursday, March 28th, at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. The meeting will start in the Veterans Room. If there is an overflow, the meeting will be moved up here to the Council Chambers. Anyone wishing to make comment in writing can do so by Wednesday, March 27th, at noon to the Board of Health office. The public hearing has been advertised in the local paper on March 14th and March 21st, as well as the town's website. A draft copy may be obtained at the Southbridge Board of Health office. The curbside leaf and yard waste program will begin April 15th for six weeks. All yard waste must be placed in a brown paper bag or open container and out on the curb by 7:00 AM on your designated pickup. Beginning in May, the leaf and yard waste dumpster will be available for property owners enrolled in the municipal curbside program. More information will follow. We have discussed with the DPW the situating of those dumpsters and access into the facility. It will not be the same as it was previously. No one will be allowed to simply pull up, back up, and dump their belongings. They'll have to walk through the gates into the facility to be able to drop their materials. As of today, all bulk requests must be registered through Casella at 800-227-3552, including mattresses and box springs. That program will be solely held by Casella, and the pricing for those items are on their website. The household hazardous waste day is scheduled for March 30th. In regards to the airport, today, we received information that the mass DOT grant in the amount of $1,463,000 was received and awarded to the town of Southbridge for the fencing. Bids are to be received on March 27th. In regards to the diner, the RFP was received and reviewed. We received two responsible bids, the Flight Deck and Honest Town Eats. We are proceeding with the Flight Deck. They are a young couple from Serbridge and very eager to start. In fact, they were in the office today doing a lot of paperwork for their common vic license, as well as other permanent. The lease is being worked on and will be sent to the General Government Subcommittee. The owners have been working with the Airport Manager and the Airport Commission on repairs and upgrades until the lease is signed. Everybody, I'm sure, has seen the strong social media presence. We will ask this General Government to set up a meeting for the week of April 1st, with the lease being ratified on April 8th. In regards to any staffing changes, Patty Julian was hired as the administrative assistant replacing Maritza, effective today. Maritza has transitioned into the role as the Town Agent for Solid Waste and Recyclable Meritorial Collection. We have conducted interviews with the solid waste recycling monitors. Three candidates have been extended offers, and their start dates are pending, medical and background, so they will be the monitors, and that is in place. In the Finance Department, Joanne, who was our interim treasure collector, will be transitioning from a paid consultant role to the ARPA Financial Analyst role, effective April 1st. In the Assessors' Office, Will Canoyer has asked to leave as the principal assessor, effective March 31st, 2024. He will stay on as a consultant. We'll be going to General Government with a proposed plan for the reorganization of that office as well. In regards to the budget for FY '25, the submission of the budget to Town Council shall take place at least 90 days prior to the start of the fiscal year. That submission would have been by April 1st, 2024. Last week, myself, Michelle, Treasure Collector Finance Director, Dean Yakabuchi, our assistant, had a meeting with the Town Council Chairman and Vice Chairman to discuss the status of the budget and the presentation of our budget. With the exception of the school budget, all department budgets and the Bay Path budget had been received. We did not receive the Southbridge School budget until Thursday evening. The Southbridge School budget is our largest budget, and we did not receive it until after the public hearing or right just prior. However, on the town side, our department heads had met with, again, myself, Michelle, and Dean, discussed their needs and goals for the upcoming year. As you're all aware, the challenges that we faced upon the arrival as Town Manager back in September, we had several key financial positions and staff, no Finance Director again from February of 2023 till January of 2024. As of this date, Michelle has been with us approximately 12 weeks, and Dean 10 weeks, and Will was here for a short period of time for six weeks. Despite the various challenges faced during the course of the past three and a half months, we're able to establish and have certified the tax rate and send out the bills. We closed out the FY '23 budget in February, submitted a balance sheet to DOR, and had free cash and retainer and certified on March 11th. That was a very short turnaround. We also sent out the RFP for the revaluation services, set up the solid waste billing system to be live by April 1st, set up the opt-out program, which is ready to go live. We are now currently reviewing the indirect cost of our enterprise funds so that we can validate what our indirect cost is. I mentioned that at the last meeting when we went through that. We also had to conduct a review of our major capital programs, such as the West Street Project. A lot of things had come up during the closure of the year and our certification of free cash, where we had to reconcile many items, especially votes relating to borrowing that had been approved by prior Town Councils. Those votes had gone back a number of fiscal years, and Dean worked very hard over almost three days to four days, which is a week for him, to reconcile that so that we could then present those items to Michelle so that she could pursue the debt schedule and the debt borrowing, which is an integral part of setting our budget for FY '25. We also completed the audit, and during this time, we were working on numerous programs, as well as Michelle working on a tax title process, and she's going to give a brief update shortly. All of this is to say, not complain about the hard work that was beside us, but really to give a sense of the accomplishments that we have made, to make sure that we're on stable ground to present a fiscally responsible budget. So with that said, I had spoken with the Chairman of the Council and the Vice Chair with my team about what it would mean to wait one week till April 8th, present to the Town Council a sustainable budget. And so tonight, while we don't have the presentation for our budget, we will have a solid budget, well, at least the initial presentation, to the Town Council on April 8th. I passed out earlier this evening to you all the schedule for Subcommittee meetings. What that is, is just what Subcommittee's and what departments will go forward. My office will work with the Subcommittee Chairman to come up with dates for the meetings. Those meetings will be conducted, and we should hope to have those all completed by the first week of May. We will meet all other deadlines relating to the public hearings on the budget capital programs, which will occur in May, and the adoption of the budget on or by the end of the 11th month of fiscal year '24, which is required by charter. Our goal is to present to the Council and the community and the town a conservative, fiscally responsible budget for the future of Southbridge. And by giving us the extra time to make sure that we have all our accounting in place, our debt in place, our indirect cost in place, we feel that we will give a very responsible budget for vetting by the Town Council. There's any questions relative to the budget? I do have Dean here or Michelle, if you have any questions of me right now. I did ask them to come.
Are there any questions by council?
Just have one.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise is in Education and Human Services. Usually, that's a DPW type of program. A lot of communities around here, their curbside or any kind of waste collection is handled by the DPW.
That was put in that because it falls under the inspections Department. That's why it went to that Subcommittee.
Okay.
Then lastly, if there's no other questions on the budget, Dean, sorry to have you come out, but I appreciate it.
You know, I do have a question.
Okay.
Counselor.
Normally, what happens is I'll take the previous year's budget, kind of take a look at what it looks like, and then what the new budget looks like as well. I know there was a lot of confusion last year, and it was very painful when we were going through the whole process of the budget season, a lot of new people, people weren't here, and stuff like that. Would it be safe to say that I should not take a look at last year's budget, per se, and go off what you want, or just half-half it, or take a look at maybe 2003, stuff like that, or 2002? It's not on anybody specifically. It's just something that you take a look at and then...
Yeah, no, Will, certainly you want to look at the current fiscal year budget for comparison purposes. We will be making some proposed changes to the Finance Department, and it would be very reasonable to compare that to what the existing operation is. We'll try to provide you with information that shows what the current fiscal year adjusted budget is and how that compares to the proposed fiscal year '25 budget.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Solid.
Let the record show Counselor Dow has arrived. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Are we changing the format of the budget presentation compared to previous years?
We're purposely going to try to maintain the same format. We're learning all this as we go. To present a different type of a budget format would kind of be counterproductive at this point. We're really going to try to keep it the same. I mean, there is some things that we're changing or by adding to provide deeper clarification as to where the revenue and the expenses come from, but for the most part, it's going to look the same.
Okay.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this budget going to have some sort of, I don't want to say you're not going to change it too much, but we were hoping next year to see just the need for less transfers because it would have been set up in a way where there'd be a need for less of a need for transfers.
That's a bigger issue. You'll be seeing a proposal from us later this fiscal year to have some serious work done to our chart of accounts. It drills down to such minutia that it's creating these transfers. Instead of having one supply account in a department with $3,000, you'll have three supply accounts at $1,000, and when one goes over, you know, a dollar, you're looking at a transfer. So we're trying to, we want to do a real hard look at the account structure. We need to look at the backend because you see the reports. We have to deal with how this all channels through the financial package and how it hits cash, how it hits deferred revenue accounts that are all set up. So it's a real deep dive, and it's beyond my scope, and I'm not saying this as a derogatory comment, but it's really beyond the scope of probably everybody in the building. We're going to have to bring in an auditor to do this work, and it's a pretty extensive process. So we'll be coming back to the Council later in the year, but things like that will address the amount of transfers. It's not an effort to try to put everything into one big pot and spend crazily. It's to consolidate similar expense items into one account so that we're tracking it in one place.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I think what we're going to see is the evolution of our Finance Department. We are going to start out where it looks like the same. I think we have a tremendous amount of adjusting in each department on how we handle it and how we do business, but right now, I think coming in with a solid, responsible budget and then going forward after the budget, I think we have a lot of homework to do down in the Finance Department, and we have these two people here, the Town Manager, that we're all on the same page as far as we know where we are, we know where we have to go. It's going to take time and money to get there. Counselor Shenier.
Mr. Yakabuchi, last year, if I recall, we had, the budget was presented on the Munis system, and we found during that process that it was very difficult to follow the line items. So are we going to expect to have the same difficulty?
We'll be using Munis again. I mean, that's our accounting package, and, you know, it's not going to change. We are trying to make the accounts and the backup information a little more user-friendly, and we'll be able to explain the report to you, but it is going to be a Munis report, and we are limited by the canned software, the format that the report spit out in, but we will try to make it as user-friendly as we possibly can. You know, we, Michelle and I have already talked about, and it was as recent as earlier this afternoon, getting the budget reports in some type of a summary format, so when you're looking at a budget, you'll have all the backup behind it, but it'd be really nice just to have the departmental budget in front of you with the various expense line items in it, so you can see that, and then look further in your budget document for the detail of that. So we're still trying to figure out how we can produce that for you, but that's our intention.
Thank you.
Any other questions by council? Counselor Rivas.
I love that. That's going to be wonderful because I, last round was sort of my first time, and it was really confusing as a new counselor. I'm wondering, my question is, since we saw the school budget at the public hearing, whether there could be some kind of alignment that we could see or suggest that the receiver have their budget in this kind of a similar format? There's a lot of data, but there's sort of mismatching where you see, you see sort of like different positions, but then you see salaries in a different, so things are not aligned in that way, and that would be a great way to be able to digest the school budget as well.
Quite honestly, we haven't had an opportunity to really take a deep dive into the school budget because we just, Michelle and Dean actually got them today, but we'll take a look at it to make sure.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by council? If not, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And then finally, on Mill Street, letter was sent again to the owner regarding the cleanup degree. He was given 30 days to clean up. We doubt we're going to hear from him, but it has been sent out. We are working with the Building Department, the Commissioner, on the main building. There has been ongoing research with our tax title and now KP Law regarding the bankruptcy tax title issues, and there's communication going back and forth with them, and they are working on the next steps regarding that process, and that will segue into the tax title little brief that I would like Michelle to give to the Council about, with all the other work that I mentioned that we're ongoing, she has been working to start the process of tax title, which has been done in a number of years, so Michelle will give a quick brief.
Good evening. So I have, since I've been on board, I have reviewed all of the outstanding taxes that we have at this time. The first thing I wanted to do was bring someone in that I have worked well with for the last 10-plus, almost 18 years. So I have replaced our tax title attorney with Iris Lahey, an attorney Iris Lahey. She was already out here already, and we've gone through half of what was already tax list, so we've identified everything. She's coming back out in another month to go through the rest of it, but during that process, we were able to find out that we took on ownership of like another four to five properties over the summer, so that grew that list a little more. I just spent today going through the rest of the actual owned property list, so after I meet with her again, I'll be able to secure that list, and I will eventually post it online. So my goal is to not only post the town-owned properties online, hopefully by the end of the fiscal year, I will also, after I've gone through my first two rounds of tax liens, I will also be posting that, too. So with that said, it's been five years since a tax lien process has been done. That's not a good thing. So I'm currently working on '20 and '21 right now to make sure that we don't lose any opportunities because there are laws that prohibit after a certain amount of time. Given all four years, right now, it's his time, we have over $1 million in outstanding principal alone. You tack on penalties and interest, you're probably talking about a mil five, so easy. So, sent out my first 25 outstanding for 2020, and that amounted with penalties and interest for $250,000. So, there's over 400 out of the four years from '20 to '23, which is four years. I can't do '24 yet, over 400 bills that I have to send out, so.
Are there any questions?
Not really any questions, but I just appreciate Town Manager, Dean, yourself, Michelle, for doing that. I know we did, we used to do it about five years ago was when it was happening quite often, and I'm glad to see that and the possible auctions down the road as well take place in the town because there's a lot of people looking at some of these properties that have been for quite some time, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. Yes, the last auction that I was able to trace back to was 2019 for the older property. So my goal is, like I said, when she comes back in for the second go for the rest of the list, and we've identified any other ones, that will just secure the rest of my, the actual town-owned property list, and then I want to get ready for an auction, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by council? If not, thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
That is all I have for my report. Thank you for indulgence.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the Council on 20 issues that are not on the agenda tonight?
Hi, I'm Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. Earlier this month, I attended the MAC Conference, that's the Massachusetts Association of Conservation and Commissioners. As a member of the CONCOM of Southbridge, that is a great educational and networking session. In addition to the sessions on bylaws, road stream crossings, and environmental justice communities I attended, I attended the award ceremony where Melissa Hofer, the Massachusetts Climate Chief in the current Massachusetts Healy Administration, gave the keynote address. She spoke of our valuable wetlands, without which we will not meet our 2050 net zero carbon goals. Our wetlands do carbon sequestration and water storage for free. We need to appreciate them and leave them intact to let them do their job in these heavy stormwater and carbon times. Thank you.
Thank you. Gus.
Hello. Gus Steves, I'm also 771 Lebanon Hill. I'm here wearing my Board of Health Vice Chair hat, specifically to mention the fact that the manager had mentioned the opt-out thing. I just wanted to point out, we are doing our public hearing on the opt-out regulations and the changes to the fee schedule this Thursday. The fee schedule's at 6:00. The opt-out changes of Chapter 2 are at 6:30. They're scheduled to be up here in the chambers, and the text for both of them are available on the Health Department page of the town website. So anybody who's listening, please come down. We're looking for comments, as many as we can possibly get. We've already had a few, but we know this is a very important issue for everybody in our community because it's a fairly serious change that's going to hit us literally next week, so please come down. Again, it's at 6 o'clock on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the Council? If not, moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Reappointment of Margaret Morrisey to the Director of the Jacob Edwards Library for a term of three years through June 30th, 2026. So move.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Shenier, seconded by Counselor Ortiz. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. Very, very happy to ask to confirm the reappointment of Margaret as the Director of the Library, as was mentioned at the EHS Subcommittee, and I'm sure you'll get their recommendation, that the Chair of the Trustees was there and unanimously supported it as well. I did add on the term, it was for three years. I just wanted to clarify that it was through June 30th of 2026 because this reappointment should have been brought forward in July of 2026. I mean, '23. Time flies, but there you go.
Subcommittee, recommendation?
This was recommended unanimously by the EHS Subcommittee, and I just want to add that... the future of our community and really helping all segments of our community and providing such incredible programs for students and, and adults alike. So, thank you, Margaret.
Any questions by any counselors? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to, to support Margaret tonight. She's done a good job over at the library, has brought a lot of new things over there, has found a lot of old films that have been uploaded, and it's a pleasure to see a lot of that stuff, old history of, of Southbridge come alive on the website. How long have, have, has Margaret been working for the town as the librarian? Seems like long before I even got on the council or got involved in politics, but happy to support her. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I started in September of 1995, so I think it's 28-plus years if my calculations are correct, and I've been known to miscalculate. I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'd just like to thank Margaret for her great service that she's done at Southbridge. At this time, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10, vote to confirm the town manager's reappointment of Caitlin Jewell as the Inspector of Animals, as recommended by the police chief in accordance with the provisions of Section 5, Chapter 129 of the MGL effective May 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Counsel recommendation for Subcommittee?
Counsel unanimously recommended it.
Any questions? If there are no questions, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Anastasia's Camenakis of Dudley, Mass. as a special traffic constable based, based on the Southbridge, excuse me, the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2027. So moved.
Second.
Is a motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Counsel recommendation, Subcommittee?
It was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 12, vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Timothy Pluff of Spence, Mass. as a traffic, a special traffic constable based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2027. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Subcommittee recommendation?
Unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13, vote to create the position of a honorary poet laureate, laurette for the town of Southbridge. So moved.
Second.
Is a motion and second by Shinia and Ortiz. Discussion?
This was a unanimous recommendation by EHS.
Any further discussion? Not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number 14. Vote to confirm the appointment of Bill Tremblay as the inaugural, excuse me, inaugural honorary poet laureate of the town of Southbridge. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Recommendation?
This was also unanimously recommended by EHS, and Margaret can talk a little bit more about him, but I do know that she mentioned he is, he's a Southbridge, a former Southbridge resident and with many accolades, and someone who we're excited to have as our first honorary poet laureate.
Margaret, would you like to come to the podium? I know it was a learning curve for myself to hear this. Could you explain to the public on what this is?
So in Massachusetts and actually throughout the country, there is established tradition of people being appointed as a poet laureate in, in communities. And I would like to think that Southbridge would be a community such that would recognize and honor people of literary merit in their community. And Bill Tremblay comes to mind as being somebody who grew up in Southbridge, who is now back again in the state. He lives in Quincy with his wife, but he has gone through the school system here and through a football scholarship, went on to become an academic, and he is a professor emeritus of Colorado State University. But he was in Southbridge during the strong tradition, I'm told, not that I know a lot about football, but in 1957, that was the year that Southbridge and, you know, the years before and after, that was a really strong tradition in Southbridge to, for the football tradition. And there was many people that went from Southbridge through the school system onto higher education to like all the big name schools. And it was a way of, like a conduit almost of education, further education by way of sport. So I think that's something we still recognize here in this community, and it gives me great pleasure to promote and propose Bill Tremblay. I've known him for probably as long as I'm at the library. He always stops in when he's in the community. He really cares for Southbridge. He grew up in the shadow of the Jacob Edwards Library just down the street, and he represents part of, you know, the Franco-American tradition as well in this community. He's very well qualified to have this honor. He is, he has multi publications and of great merit, and his most recent publication was actually launched at the library. So I think it's a great honor, and this position is not a position where there's any salary or any condition attached except to just present one program at the Jacob Edwards Library during the year of tenure. And the, the, there can be an extension for the year, but it's only capped off at two years, this position. So then at the end of two years, there is no longer a poet laureate until we come up with the next one maybe. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15. Vote to create, the creation of a chess park at Jacob Edwards Library and to allow the town manager to work with the finance department to establish and create an account to receive donations. So moved. Motion by Martin, seconded by Shinia. Recommendation?
This was also recommended unanimously at EHS.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to amend the town council vote of agenda item 17 of March 11th, 2024 to state the correct account 001-499-513000 DPW overtime. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17. Vote to enter into an agreement with LPI Communities for an eight-page color monthly newsletter for the Casablanca Senior Center at no cost to the town of Southbridge. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Recommendation?
This was also recommended unanimously at EHS, and I just want to thank Katie for following up with some answers to some questions that were posed at the EHS Subcommittee meeting.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18, vote to approve the agreement with real estate research consultants of Northfield, Dover, Mass. for personal property recertification appraisal services in the amount not to exceed $34,000 as recommended by the Board of Assessors and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion?
This was recommended favorably at Subcommittee.
Town Manager?
I think Counsel Adams has.
Go ahead.
No, no, that's all.
Counsel Adams?
And I apologize, Mr. Town Manager, I should have called you earlier today. On the next two items, I was trying to watch the video or the YouTube video of the meetings. One, sir, the next two items, are they paid through just out of the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Well, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
First off, on the next two items, I really publicly want to thank Will Canoria for his valuable input and service over a short period of time because there was a couple of issues that, first thing right in the door, and he tackled, and one of them was this RFP for these services. Had Will not come back or engaged his services, I would have been aware of it. I don't think anybody else would have, and we would have been in big trouble when it comes to recertification. So publicly, I really want to thank you, Will, for your short period of time here. I know he's going on vacation in April. I wish you the best on your vacation and welcome you back when you help work with Jasmine in the future. So with that, yes, it is in the budget. Over a number of years, if you remember five years ago or so, we had taken and put a line item of $35,000 per year because this is over a five-year period of time so that it would kind of equalize for some reason. And this is when, going back to that information that I gave during the brief about the budget, about digging into these things, for some reason, because of loss of institutional knowledge, it was recommended by the interim, interim town manager to zero out that account. So we're now going to go, instead of going from like $35,000 to maybe $37,000, $38,000 in this upcoming fiscal year, we're going to have to go to $50,000. So those are some of the impacts of what we're digging in. When I said we're digging in and trying to validate, that's one of the, one of the issues. So yes, it is normally a budgeted line item under revaluation services in a special article, I believe it was, but yes. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19, vote to approve the agreement with Vision Appraisal Technology of Hudson, Mass. for real estate property recertification appraisal services in the amount of $61,800 for fiscal year 2025 and fixed per diem prices for appraisal assistant, assistance for interim years of FY 2026, FY 2027, in option years of 2028 and FY 2029, which should not exceed $6,000 a year, as recommended by the Board of Assessors, and allow the town manager to assign all related paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz.
It was recommended favorably at Subcommittee.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say publicly, I want to thank Jasmine for helping doing these items and other items. And I also want to say, I am so impressed with this meeting. You guys are, you guys are going at a very good speed, a very good clip, and I'm not, I'm not going to say another word to slow you down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I know that, I noticed in here that it's not going to be starting, what, till the end of the month or something like that?
No, both of these projects are going to be started as soon as, as soon as you ratify the contracts and the town manager signs them. And this is actually a tight timetable here. We met with the Department of Revenue, and we have a bunch of really tight timelines, so the sooner the better. I, I would assume they will be starting next week or this week if it's signed.
Has anybody been going out recently to do this work? A couple of residents called me and said that somebody has been coming around taking pictures of their properties and.
I don't know who that is, but we are out there, I wouldn't say we're out there during the winter, during the wintertime because weather permitting, but we inspect 600 properties under one of the DOR mandates, which is called cyclical inspection, and we're out there inspecting in properties that request us to go out there. We're inspecting properties where they've pulled a building permit or an abatement application. So all in all, we probably go to 1,000 properties a year, just our office staff. So I don't know who told you that, but it's, it's not unusual and it's, you know, it could have been us, it could be an insurance, insurance adjuster for all we know, but yeah, it's ongoing.
So what's the town manager, do you know?
It could be the town manager because I had a complaint on Maria Ave on Friday and took, I could, I took pictures of two residents on Maria Ave and Island Drive in regards to zoning infractions. I came into the office at 4:30, and I was out there at 5 o'clock taking pictures, documenting it for the zoning department.
Okay. Are there any other, any other inspections going on by any of the other departments?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Also, the loan companies do that as well. They send somebody out. It could be for the insurance reasons and everything.
If I might add, excuse me, it could also be the Department of Revenue. We met with them two or three weeks ago, and they do a data quality study where they go out and look at hundreds of our properties. So it could be them as well because they planned on starting that very quickly as well.
Any further discussion? If not, thank you very much, Will. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Will, enjoy your vacation. I look forward to seeing you in May. Thank you.
Well, moving on to agenda item number 20. Vote to approve the agreement with Seven Ventures LLC for $99,133 to provide a zero commercial improvement loan to make improvements consistent with their application, helping trigger the occupancy of current, currently vacant or soon to be vacated spaces at 39 Elm Street using Opera Funds, be appropriated on, which was appropriated on 6/27/22, agenda item number 46, and allow the town manager to assign any related paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion? Counsel Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This item was voted unanimously by Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 21.
Matt, Matt was here, so thank you for coming, Matt.
Moving on to agenda item number 21. Vote to approve the contract with Caulfield Environmental for a not to exceed fee of $10,000 to provide lead inspection related to services for the CDBG FY 2223 housing rehab activities and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Recommendation?
This item was voted unanimously by Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number 22. Vote to accept a quote for no more than $3,900 to conduct as a best of survey on 76 Central Street to be funded by the FY 23 PAC grant and allow the town manager to assign any related paperwork. So moved. Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion? Counsel Daniels?
This item was voted unanimously by Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 23. Vote to approve the recreation director to apply for the United Way After School and Out of School Program for the summer programming activities. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion? Recommendation?
This was also unanimous recommendation of the EHS Subcommittee, and I'm pleased to see this come up and the ability for this grant to expand our recreation program for the summer for students in Southbridge.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 24. Vote to approve the informational technology director's request to apply for the municipal fiber grant program in order to link the town-owned facilities to centralized management of the IT infrastructure and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion?
This was voted unanimously Subcommittee.
Unanimous recommendation of Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 25, vote to accept MED Project LLC grant in the amount of $1,300 for the purpose of supporting law enforcement agencies in the collection and disposal of unwanted medicine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz.
This was approved by the Subcommittee.
Unanimous by the Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 26, vote to approve the Police Department Transfer Request of $5,000 from Account 001210546000, Building and Grounds Materials, to Account 001210524300, Repair Maintenance Building and Grounds, to cover the additional costs for the inspection and repair of the sprinkler system and elevator at the Police Headquarters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Recommendation?
This was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 27, vote to approve the Police Department Transfer Request of $6,500 from Account 001210511000, Salary to Account 001210585500, Office Supplies, to cover the costs of purchased desks and updated computer hardware.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz.
This was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 28, vote to approve the use of $15,000 in miscellaneous income projects, Number 80230, towards housing displacement relocation expenses related to CDBG FY 2022-33 housing.
Should be 23, I'm sorry. It should be 23, my apologies.
Typo. We have 2022, 2023, housing rehab, lead abatement, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Recommendation?
This was voted unanimously by Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 29, vote to accept a donation of $100 from the Hyde Group as additional matching funds for the Massachusetts Historical Commission's Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund Grant Application, and allow the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Recommendation?
This was voted unanimously by Subcommittee, and as I said the other night, we're very grateful to the Hyde Group for their continued support of various activities in town. Once again, they come through for us.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 30, vote to accept a donation of $25 in memory of a retired Captain Roger Ford, and any other funds donated in Captain Ford's name to be spent at the Fire Chief's discretion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz.
This was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this next one.
May it be noted that Counselor Adams recuses himself from the next agenda item. Agenda Item Number 31, vote to accept a donation from the Patton Alliance to the Town of Southbridge to be used by the community center in the amount of $500.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. No recommendation, any discussion?
This was recommended unanimously by EHS.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 32, let it be known, Counselor Adams has rejoined the council. Vote to approve the Medex Plan Rate Change Due to Hearing Aids Rider Benefit Increase.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion.
This was also recommended unanimously Subcommittee.
Unanimous by General Gull. Any further discussion? Counsel Reavis?
Oh, we did, you'll probably answer my question.
Well, Nora's here, if we had any questions specifically answered, but I just wanted to say, this went through the Insurance Advisory Committee. It was the Met to review the rates, and if there's any questions, I can grab Nora, but any specific questions, I will try to answer my best.
Are there any questions? Counsel Reavis?
This is the one meeting I didn't get to review, so I just was curious about how the rate change will affect anyone that has hearing aids in our employment.
I know Counsel Shinia was at the meeting, so perhaps he can.
Thank you.
Counsel Shinia?
The Medex Plan is a very, very small amount. It's like 30 cents for each side, but the rider benefit goes from $1,500 to $5,000, and from every five years to 36 months.
Thank you.
I know Counsel Shinia was very happy with the meeting, so I had imagined it went well.
Can I repeat that, please?
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 33, vote to approve the FY 25 Medical Plan Rates.
So moved.
This was motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion.
That was recommended at Subcommittee as well.
Counsel Mike Eddie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just looking at the total that people have to pay and the amount that the town has to pay, maybe I've been out of the workforce for a long time, but it seems a little high to me that somebody would have to pay this much money for insurance. I don't know if there's anything, any other insurance companies we can look at, or if you consider this a pretty good rate, but I never had to pay this kind of rate before in my working life, so thank you.
So we upped our percentages from, from 50/50 to 60/40 to 70/30. I will agree that the rates, I, I agree the rates based on what I pay now and what I paid as a private sector, substantially higher. With that in mind, Michelle coming aboard, her experience as the treasurer collector where she was, she sat on the board for the insurance rates up in that section of the state. She will be looking, and Nora will be looking, at different insurance plans to hopefully provide additional plans for the next go-around. We were very fortunate, I say that, because these rates could have been at 10 to 12%. But Maya Carey got down our increase to 6.4, so we were potentially facing a 10% increase. I do know how, how tough it is because there's an individual that works at one of our offices that left a private entity to come work here, and when she got her first check, she was quite shocked about the health insurance. So it is something that we will be working on as a town. Unfortunately, because of our loss ratios, they were quite high in some instances, and that's prevented us from going into a different network that Michelle came from, that they had tried a couple of years ago to get to that, but they wouldn't even talk to us because of what our, our loss, losses look like. But that is something that we're aggressively looking at.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Shinni?
Mr. Chairman, through, through to you. The Insurance Advisory Committee looked at this, and the town has hired Cooking Company as their insurance advisory group that looks at the plans that were offered, and, and part of this is a, they, they expected the rates to be well over 10% increase, but it turned out it's much lower underneath there. I think it was 6, 6 point something. I'm, I'm not sure. I don't have paperwork in front of me. But also included on that is the fact that they added another insurance, for affordable insurance, to the employees because of the problem that we had where we got fined by the feds for not offering an affordable insurance. So that, that is in there. Employees will have the option to purchase that, and it's their higher deductibles and those kind of things. But all in all, Cooking Company did look at, at the other policies, they looked at GIS and all those kind of things, and it's just, for, for what we get and what is being offered out there, we have a good insurance.
Any further discussion?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, just to reiterate that point about, if you looked at, highlighted one, the Network Blue High Deductible Plan, that was the one that was added because we did not offer that before. We were getting penalized by the IRS, I believe it was. So that, that offering is there now, so we can resolve that issue.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Vote to approve the proposal from Aflac for additional benefit offerings to active employees and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Like, motion by Dow? Beat Shinia, Shinia came in second, went in second. Any discussion? Counsel Shinia?
Again, the Insurance Advisory Committee, when it sat down this, and the, the Aflac additional benefits is paid for by the employees and not the town. It's a town is offering it as a benefit to the employees, and they'll pay the full price, the employee.
Any further discussion?
Recommended at Subcommittee unanimously.
I should be able to wake up. Next. Anything else? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present.
Aflac.
Moving on to Counsel's Forum, Counsel Reavis?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of items. I wanted to give my condolences to the family of Greg Choquette, who was a 1997 graduate of Southbridge High School. Father, husband, friend to many people in our community, so passed away last week, and they had a memorial service at 25 Coal Ave for him this weekend. So just wanted to extend my condolences to his family. I also wanted to just review a little bit from the Southbridge Public Schools public hearing that was held on Thursday. There were a few people in attendance who expressed their concerns on the teacher turnover, leadership training, the conditions of elementary school buildings. There was lots of discussion on MCAS scores and gaps in MCAS scores for students with disabilities and students of color, as well as chronic absenteeism. And we did see some bright spots in some of the MCAS scores, which, you know, that does, you know, produce a bright spot, but some of the other areas, we hope that the receiver, as he comes in to present the budget to EHS and to the school committee, is able to give us more information on some of the strategies to address some of these concerns, especially with quite a few teachers leaving in the last month, you know, even specifically from the freshman ninth grade pod. And so those were just some of the highlights from the public hearing. I also attended the WRTA meeting on Thursday, and there was a review from the Zero Fair Coalition on some of the results of having the fare-free buses. They presented a, a presentation, like a PowerPoint presentation, they can certainly forward to the counselors, but lots of really good data on, on how riders utilize the fare-free. So it does say that healthcare appointments are pretty much the largest reason that people ride the bus, shopping in errands for work, to visit friends or family, school, going to school. And here in our community, I knew that former Counsel Ryan talked about a little bit about how she rides the bus to go to work in Auburn, and she's met a few different people that, you know, that utilize our fare-free buses and who were, would not have been able to ride the bus to work or to appointments, elderly couples who ride the bus to their, you know, appointments in Worcester. So it's really important for us to keep, keep this going, and the budget vote will be, I believe, next month to continue the fare-free services in, in our, in our region. And tomorrow, there will be an event by the Fare Free Coalition in Worcester at 4 o'clock. They will be having a press conference on the fare-free busing and how the WRTA has been a leader in our state, having to do with providing these rides for people in many communities that, that utilize. And it does, the data does show that the ridership has increased since the fares were eliminated. So something that we really want to continue, to help people in our community to get to school, to get to work, those are all really, and get to medical appointments. That, that really, that really stood out to me from their data, that there are elderly people in our community, that, community that utilize the busing to, to get to health appointments in Worcester. So that was really important for us to know, and I will share that out with everyone.
Counselor, can I ask you a question on the busing?
Sure.
There's a major concern in Southbridge of WRTA bringing a tremendous amount of homeless people and dropping them right at Cumberland Farms, and there is a concentration of street people that have been brought in from Worcester to our main street. Everybody seems to see it, and I don't know if it shows it on the data, when it's a free ride, it seems like we're getting a very tough element. We're inheriting it out of Worcester. I agree with you, taking people to their jobs or to college is very, very important, but we're having a very, very bad time lately with people going into vehicles. I know some counselors up here have brought it to my attention, where they dropped off and they create a problem in the parking lot, in the stores, and on the frontages of the businesses. So I think that we need to kind of look at the whole picture, not just the good parts of it. We have, we're having a problem, and I think if you, when, when people are unloaded with pillows and blankets, I don't think they're coming to work here. I don't think the jobs are here, but we, we might have to look at that a little closer.
That hasn't been the experience of the people that have been riding the bus from our community that I've spoken to. I haven't seen that. Certainly, you know, you know, one of the homeless people actually who passed away recently, you know, is the only case that I know of, of a person who, you know, who, who had come here from Worcester. I, I don't see that. I haven't heard that from any of the people that are frequent riders of the WRTA bus from Southbridge. It's certainly something that we can have Josh, who is the Executive Director, come in and present to the council, and certainly ask questions. That doesn't bear fruit in this data, and in the interviews that, you know, that I've done or that I've heard from people that do ride the bus here. So I'm not sure. There could be people that come and visit, you know, people that they know. People from Southbridge and Worcester are very connected, and people come back and forth. I don't think that we should, homelessness and unhoused people because of our housing problem statewide and across the country is a problem, and I, I don't think that we should eliminate or demonize the transportation system that is an asset to our community because of something that is a, a separate problem. And I think that homelessness is a problem in, in many communities, but there is an underlying reason for that, and, and housing has a lot to do with that. And so I think tackling the underlying issue rather than putting it on something that is a benefit to many people in our community is something that we should look at. I know that the Town Manager... I know that the town manager and I have talked about, you know, possibly creating a, a task force to look at the issue of homelessness, and I think that is the way to go. And bringing together many agencies in our community that do this work and are experts, rather than put that on to the WRTA and focusing on something.
I think the point that we have to watch is, you don't have to have a, a study. You just sit in front of the Cumberland Farms and watch it happen. I don't want to inherit Worcester's housing problems. We are Southbridge. We put Southbridge first. We are, we are a very small community with a tremendous amount of low income, and we have our agencies working on all fronts. We're a very good community like that. But to turn around and start dropping Worcester problems off in Southbridge, I think we need to take a hard look at that and ask ourselves, what do we want to be when we grow up? And I think that's the point of being there, seeing it. I don't expect Worcester to just put a monitor at that Cumberland Farms, but I think we as elected officials have to worry about our businesses that invest in our town and our frontages that need to be taken care of. Our law enforcement is, is, is full tilt all the time, and a lot of the calls are because of what's happening at the Cumberland Farms. So I think we need to look at it holistically. I thoroughly understand homelessness. I just don't want to inherit someone else's homelessness.
And, and I, I can appreciate that, but as someone who's worked in social services for almost my whole life, I, I doubt that homeless people in a city that has much more, many more services than our small town here, that only has one shelter, that is overflowing with families, that they're going to, going to come here to stay here and be homeless in a community that doesn't have services. I think that people come back and forth and visit people that they know. Problems at Cumberland Farms, again, you know, working with our law enforcement who are incredible, do an incredible job. But I don't think that if we see people coming off the bus who, again, unless you're interviewing them and verifying that they are unhoused people, I don't think that people are remaining here in this community because there just isn't the services here that there are in Worcester. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense from a professional standpoint that I have experience in. But we can certainly explore that and have conversations about it. We can certainly invite the WRTA representatives to come in and talk about it. That, that all can happen.
When the tents are set up on the side of the churches for people to be in during a very cold weather spell that come off of that bus, concerns me about what is coming off of the bus. So going forward, I'm saying, let you just take a look at it. I think we, we, we can deal with it as it comes, but I think Southbridge has plenty to take care of. Is there anything else, Councilor Reedus?
Yes, I have a few more items. I was also able to visit last week with the Centro Las Americas program at 12 Crane. I wanted to thank Gabe McCarthy for inviting me and giving me a tour of their workshop. I met some of the seven participants this year, the majority of them from Southbridge. If you're not familiar with the program, it is sort of a rehabilitation program for people who have been released, who were incarcerated, the majority of them from Southbridge. And it's great to see this program helping people from our community who need to learn skills, and they placed almost, I think 90% of the people from last year's graduating class, and the majority of them have continued being employed a year later. So it's, it's such a testament to a program that is very small, but is helping a lot of people in our community. And so I was, I'm thankful that I was able to, to visit. I encourage other councillors to go and visit and take a tour of their workshop. I also wanted to mention that this Saturday at Jacob Edwards Library, there will be a Women's History event sponsored by Ulster Bridge Village's Americor program. It will be at 10:30 on Saturday, and they will be creating a Women's History-inspired tote bags. And two of the program participants are recent Southbridge High School graduates, so I really want to promote that program and have people go and, and, you know, learn from our Americor program participants. I also, I had one, one last thing, just kind of, I know that recently the chair and the town manager had gone to Holyoke and talked to the mayor there. I was wondering if there was an update on if they are coming to visit here or what, what the status is.
The town manager's not doing it. I'm doing it with him. I've been in contact with the mayor's office. We are having a, we're trying to get scheduled. He had to go on vacation, so we're working on a timeframe on, I've had in my town, but I think it's going to be two or three weeks before we contact each other and set up the meeting where they're going to come to Southbridge. And I will be setting up a joint meeting where we can join forces as far as the receivership and stuff. So it's, right now it's on hold. I think once he gets back from his vacation, we'll schedule.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you. Nothing.
Counselor Shinya.
Nothing tonight.
Come on, take it.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just want to pay tribute and have everybody think about our Vietnam veterans who be celebrating March 29th. This is Vietnam Veterans Day. Just to have anybody know, 58,000 US soldiers died in that war, almost 20 years, from 1950s all the way to 1975. So for those individuals that served during Vietnam, I thank you for your service and all that you've done and all the crap you had to go through coming home. And I, you know, that was not deserved. And I just wish everybody else a happy Easter.
Counselor Ortiz.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Last week, I had the, the distinct pleasure of going with the town manager to see the youth center being built on the corner of Thomas and Charlton Streets. Reverend Esteban Carrasco is leading the way there. You can see that there's been a lot of work done. There's a lot of work more that needs to be done, but his vision is very discernible. It's going to be a nice building, good programming, and it's something worth investigating. I know he does a lot of informational, informational postings on Facebook. It's worth looking up to see what it is that's going on. Very pleased with what's happening so far down there. So congratulations to Reverend Carrasco and the work that he's doing. I'd like to thank the town manager once again, and I will continue to do this, for his team and the work that they're doing on the finances. I saw what was happening as the previous town chair, town council chair, and saw that there was a lot of work that needed to be done. There was a lot happening. And under his guidance and leadership, the, the current town manager's guidance and leadership, there's been a lot of change that's been made, a lot of good work that's been done, and it does nothing but serve the town of Southbridge well. So again, thank you, Jack, for a job well done. I believe one of the agenda items tonight, one of the police transfers had to do with their accreditation process. And I just want to say thank you to the chief of police and to his force for submitting to the accreditation process and continuing that fine work as well. It, it's nice to know that we have a force that's willing to look at themselves, to look in the mirror, see what they're doing, see how they're doing it, and to improve their process, to improve their day-to-day activities, and bring them up to a, a very high level of standard. And I appreciate that. Finally, I was at a meeting, a video meeting last week with the Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization. Peg Dean was on that meeting with me as well. And among the many, many items that were discussed, as it does cover all of Central Mass, were a quick hit on the Hook Hamilton Street project and the Mill Street Bridges project. Those items are still in, they're still going forward. I believe that the Hook Hamilton Project starts in fiscal year '25. The Mill Street Bridges, I believe, are moved to fiscal year '26. That's going to be confirmed after a public hearing that's coming up shortly. Also, recently, the DPW director made recommendations for this calendar year for road work to be done, I believe down in the Crystal Street area. To the people in town, for the last six years, this council has heard your message, and we continue to hear it over and over and over again about fix the roads, fix the roads, fix the roads. The roads are being fixed. The roads are being repaired. We can't do every single road at the same time. We can't do every single road in five years' time, but we will get to every single road in due course. And I look forward to hearing the complaints about there being too many detours and too much road work being done, because that'll be a nice change from that there's allegedly not enough being done. I'm personally pleased with the amount of work that is being done in town. The, the DPW director has been very diligent in terms of not only creating a road program, but also in terms of keeping an eye on the contractors in town and what they're doing and how they're working when they come into town to work on various utilities. So my thanks to the DPW director, and we'll see you at the next detour. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I did want to remind everybody that there will be a Board of Health public hearing March 28th, 6:30 PM. I know the town manager mentioned it, and I know Citizen Gus Steves mentioned it. It was in the newspaper, but it was reported in the newspaper, a public hearing will be in the veterans' room, not upstairs. So if you're changing locations, you might want to put a, some kind of a notice out there. They're going to be discussing the regulations concerning the town's curbside collection program. Residents may want to show up and ask some questions. There are some issues that have been coming up. I, I got a call today from someone. If a resident has a house that's empty, they're not going to be able to opt out. There's, they're going to still have to pay whether the house is empty or not, which I, I think is unfortunate. I don't think it's, it's fair to charge somebody if there's nobody living there, but that is what the rules are. So residents may want to show up at this hearing Thursday and voice their concerns. I'd also wanted to ask about the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, I think the town manager wanted to.
Sure.
Just in regards. In regards to the, no, just in regards to the public hearing. Marita indicated this morning, this morning when I confirmed it, it will open up in the veterans' room. If there are too many people, it will be moved up to here because of the way it was posted.
Okay.
So that, that's when I said the veterans' room and moved up here, that's, that's why.
All right.
Okay.
Please, Jim.
I did want to ask about the road improvement plan as well. The Crystal Street project, I think is part of that CDBG grant, which is not going to take place until next year. So my question is, what, is there a road improvement plan for this year? I did ask the town manager about this. I'm still waiting on a, a report on are there any roads going to be worked on this year? I know one year we did fog sealing, we did crack sealing, we did some paving, and it's something that the council voted on a couple of years ago. I don't think we ever rescinded that plan, so I would like to, to see some road work this year, this summer. And usually by now, we should be hearing about what the plans are. If you keep ignoring the roads, they're not going to get any better, they're just going to get worse. I did attend that school building, the school budget hearing, and the receiver talked about some of the school buildings that are in need of repair, and that's going to be another large amount of capital funds. I don't know where we're going to come up with that either. So again, if you ignore buildings, if you ignore roads, they're just going to keep deteriorating. They're not going to get any better. And one last thing, if at some point I can get a capital budget report, I've asked a couple of times for a new capital budget line item of all the, all the expenses that were set aside over the years. And you said it needed to be updated, so when you can get that to me, I know you're working on the budget right now, but if I could get that capital budget report, I would appreciate it. Other than that, nothing else. Thank you.
So, Mr. Town Manager.
And, and just response, we have been working also in regards to all the other budget things, working on reconciling the capital thing. I have been breaking it down into different categories, i.e., town hall, what was allocated over the years for town hall? What was allocated for the library? What was allocated for the community center? I took a look at all the accounts that go back to 2015 to see what may be reallocated to try to come up with a comprehensive plan in the budget process. Nobody is ignoring roads. I've had this conversation over and over again about the fact that the town council has taken numerous votes over the years, and the reconciliation on the West Street program was exactly what I was talking about. This town council, along with me as a town councillor, had voted over a number of years to borrow money, to take enterprise fund, to use CDBG, to use various forces just to fund the West Street project. Then when we do the reconciliation in this budget, when we're coming on, I'm now on the other side, and we sit there going, what, what was asked to be borrowed? What was asked to be spent? What are we doing just on the West Street project? We learned that there was $1,040,000 authorized by previous town council votes to borrow money, and it was never borrowed. Chapter 90 bunnies that were allocated to the account that weren't asked for reimbursement. That has all an impact on free cash and other, I say, so we're trying to fix that so that we can come to the council with a plan of what are the next roads. The town council did authorize a borrowing of $10 million over a number of years, but that also has to fit into our debt structure when we come for a council vote. So we're trying to put together what that debt schedule looked like, what that borrowing was, what can we borrow this year? What do we absolutely have to borrow this year to satisfy previous town council votes that will fit into the budget line item for debt to make sure we have a balanced budget? Then we take a look at going forward, what projects and when are they going to start, i.e., East Main Street and the two bridges. We have two bridges that the town council accepted votes in 2020 to the tune of a half a million for each bridge. However, what we did not, or what anybody, and through no fault of council, because I sat on the other side, it's all well and good. And we've had this conversation as a finance team and management to sit there going, if we're going to apply for any grants going forward, it is going to start from now on in the town manager and finance department first. A department head will come to us and say, I want to apply for a small bridge grant? Great, if it's half a million dollars, but what are the other costs and where is that money coming from? Because now we're on the hook for two half-million-dollar bridges, but we also have to try to figure out how we're paying $2 million more to get that project approved. And I don't think this town council wants to sit there and say, let's return a half-a-million dollars per bridge that needs to be fixed. So we're not ignoring roads. We're trying to figure out what is, what do we have to borrow before May, because we just completed the audit and everything is time-sensitive. You complete an audit, that puts you into your audit disclosures so you can borrow money, so you can get favorable rates. So we're trying to figure out what has to be borrowed today on projects that have already either been completed at this point. And then July 1st, when is that project for East Main Street conceivably going to go out to bid so that we can borrow at the appropriate time so that we have the funding? Those are all the things that we're working on. So by no means are we ignoring roads. We're trying to come up with, one, what, how are we going to fund them? And then come to the council with a plan. So they're not being ignored. I just want that to be first and foremost, because like everybody, I drive the roads every day, too. I hate driving down Dresser Street. Every day I come to work from my house to here and drive on Dresser Street, and I hate that road, and when we're going to fix it? But Boston Gas turns around and says, we still have to do repairs on Dresser Street, so we can't fix it. So we are, we have all of this at top of mind, council. I just want the public to know we are trying to address it and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thinking, Mr. Town Manager? Are you all set?
Yep, I'm good.
Moving on to the extra agenda item 36, discussion next meeting day. Vice Chairman.
The next meeting is Monday, April 8th, 2024, 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.
Agenda item number 37, most adjourned.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow, is in favor. Opposed? Members of all present.